Good evening. I call to order the February meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. And on behalf of the staff and the commissioners, I want to thank every one of you all for being here tonight. Everything we do is for y'all. And it really helps when you participate, when you become part of the process. So, thank you very, very much. The first item on the agenda is our invocation. I'm going to ask Mr. Moses if he would do that for us, please.
Thank you all. I want to thank everyone here, to the president and all. And always remember, let's pray for one another because we don't know when it'll be our last time. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this gathering here tonight to do the business of the citizens of Florence. Dear Lord, as we do everything, do it in the will of the goodwill of the people. These are the blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. I noticed that the commissioners are kind of looking around up here and they notice a new face. So, we've had several new commissioners over the past five, six months and we've been blessed. Everyone up here is dedicated and I couldn't be more proud of them. But tonight, I would like to introduce Mr. Charlie Abbott to my far left. Charlie, I told him in advance, just like our newest members, I'd like for them just to kind of tell us and the crowd a little bit about himself. So, Charlie, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sounds good. As chairman said, my name is Charlie Abbott. I work for Carolina Bank here in Florence. And I'm almost a lifelong resident of Florence. We moved here when I was three, product of Florence School District One. I'm a proud Gamecock, so hope that doesn't ruffle any feathers. My wife is Catherine Abbott of Darlington. And we have three small children together, a nine-year-old, a four-year-old, and a one-year-old. So, everything I do, I hope that we improve Florence for them.
Thank you very much. Very well said. Yes, welcome. All right, approval of the minutes. It's kind of unique in the fact that we haven't met since December the 12th. Is that correct? Because we're approving, well, January 9th.
We haven't met since last year.
Yeah. I haven't been up here. I've missed two, one out of sickness and one we were off last month.
Yeah, we didn't have any cases in January.
Okay, so we are approving January 9th minutes, is that correct?
December 12th.
December 12th. That's because there's no meeting held on January 9th. The commissioners received their packets, had a chance to review them. I've been through them. If there are no changes, corrections, I call for a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Nays like sign and ayes carry it. Thank you. Ms. Lane, public hearing and matter in position for action, PC 2024-01. Staff report, please, and good evening.
Good evening. Well, Happy New Year. We're starting off with a bang here. This is a request to rezone a portion of the parcel at 186 Dunbarton Drive from Commercial General to Heavy Industrial. And it's identified as a portion of tax map number triple zero ninety-nine dash oh one dash oh two zero. This parcel is located on Dunbarton, faces Interstate 95, just north of the Florence Mall. To its north is the UPS distribution facility. And to its, on the south side, are some hotels and the Florence Mall, as you can see. It's on the very edge of town. Everything in blue there is in the city limits. And then the parcel in question is outlined in red. It is zoned Commercial General and then the mall itself is zoned Plan Development with a commercial use for it. The future land use maps with the new 2023 comprehensive plan dictates, recommends the whole area being general commercial uses. So, the applicants own the entire parcel, which as you can see is kind of an oddly shaped parcel. And at the front there, 186, is the office building where ACS Technologies is currently located. And they are continuing, this is a new owner for the property, and they are continuing to have ACS Technologies there. What they would like to do is because of the odd shape of the parcel, they would like to put a warehousing and distribution center in the back there. Very similar to the UPS right next door, but that one's in the county. And in order to do so, though, our zoning ordinance does not permit that kind of use in anything except a heavy industrial zoning district. So, that's the only reason they're asking for the heavy industrials because that's the only one that would enable them to do what they want to do. This is a proposed site plan. They would leave the building, the office buildings up and continue that. They would build a couple of warehouse-type buildings with their own parking areas for trucks. As you can see, none of it would be visible from the right-of-way. It would all be tucked at the back behind the UPS location. And it would be on the edge of county property. That other parcel on the other side of the UPS parcel is where they are currently clearing for multifamily use. So, as you can see, there are different uses on the, or different intensities of uses. The warehousing and logistics distribution center is only in the heavy industrial. I went back and looked at the old zoning ordinance. And the old zoning ordinance, it was permitted in the B3 district, which is the equivalent of the Commercial General. So, I'm not sure why it was made so restrictive in this one, but that's where it is. So, that is what they're requesting due to the shape of the lot and also the presence of floodplain in the rear of it. A lot of other heavier industrial uses would have a hard time getting in there. So, they are requesting the warehouse and distribution center there. So, here's some site photos. The lower right picture, those tree areas, that's way back behind there is where they would be locating this. So, that's the view from Dunbarton. You'd have to really be looking for it. That concludes staff's report, but a representative for the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Great. Any questions?
Would you put the overall picture again showing the UPS? And just be sure, so the unshaded area is the UPS?
Correct. The one that says 200 on it, that's in that L shape of the orange, is the UPS.
That's the UPS?
Yes.
Yes. And then on the other side of the UPS is the residential?
It's going to be apartments. That's correct.
And that goes where? How deep? All the way through? The whole parcel?
There's actually one other parcel in between the residential development, multifamily, and the UPS facility. It's kind of long in there.
The multifamily property, property line runs essentially the creek through here. So, all this will be multifamily. And then this is being preserved as it currently is. It's owned by the Bruce and Lee Foundation.
I do have a question that involves the Bruce and Lee Foundation. From what I understand, Bruce and Lee purchased that for botanical garden and venue possibility. Is the Bruce and Lee property in the city limits? All right. Any other questions, the staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing portion of this. And we have a couple of procedural things I want to discuss with you. And those that have not participated in a planning commission, I'll ask for anyone that is against this request to come up and speak. And you cannot speak from the seats. We want you to come up to the podium because this is videotaped and recorded. So, we want to be able to put it in our minutes next month. So, if there are more than two or three, we'll certainly let them come and give us their thoughts as to being against this request. And then I'll, anyone that is for this request, I'll invite to come forward as well. Anyone that's at the podium, I want you to speak directly to the commissioners and not to anyone in the audience. And so, with that said, is there anyone that is against this request that would like to come up front and speak? Seeing none? Ma'am? Well, you have to come to the, and give us your name, please, when you get up here. What's your name, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Rosalyn Green. I live near that property which you want to develop and I have some questions. My concern is traffic.
Ma'am, we're not on the Bannock Burn case just yet. This is over by the Florence, or the Magnolia Mall.
By the Magnolia Mall, correctly.
Okay.
That side road, correct, the back road. Well, I live near there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought.
You live on Dunbarton?
I'm off of Hoffmeyer and Ebenezer.
Okay.
So, I live very close near there. So, we're talking about traffic between there because you're going to have Hoffmeyer traffic. You have Ebenezer traffic. People go that way to the mall, the back way to the mall there. Am I correct? Am I correct? Tell me if I'm wrong now. So, I am concerned about the traffic. I'm a school teacher. I'm trying to get to work. Traffic is heavy. Buses, concerns. How are we, how do you propose this is going to work with traffic with this? How are people going to get in? How are people going to get out? Safety and concern is one of my concerns about that. Because you have traffic on Hoffmeyer Road. You have traffic coming off of I-20 because people use that side road to come off of I-20. Or is that I-20 or I-95?
I-95.
I-95, I'm sorry. Coming off I-95, that side road. You have multiple businesses there. That's the main hub of business because you have Magnolia Mall. You have that traffic as well. Christmas time, holiday time, that traffic is crazy. Plus, you have to think about the local school districts that you have. We have Sneed, I mean, we have Sneed, we have Lucy T., we have Moore, we have Westmore. People move there. That means more students for those schools. Even the Virtuous School, which is down Ebenezer, going down some street extension and turning there, we're already overcrowded with schools. We're short of teachers. I'm just asking from that standpoint, how is this going to work logistically? I'm not saying that you cannot build and be prosperous, but you've got to think about what you already have here.
As far as an impact to the school district, this is, the request is for industrial use so there will not be any additional residential component to this. So, it would not have an impact to the school district. With the traffic, these are all DOT streets. So, no matter what occurs as far as development on this piece of property, whether it stays Commercial General or it is rezoned and they're allowed to move forward with this warehousing, DOT will be the body that reviews and determines what, if anything, needs to be done to the roadways there to handle whatever may occur.
So, this is, so you're only asking to build warehouses on this because I came in late, but I heard something about apartment complexes as well.
The property, Derek, if you'll put up. The property here is currently under construction. It's located in the county. It's not in city limits. And they are constructing multifamily there.
Okay.
And typically, in a warehousing, distribution type of environment, they're coming immediately off 95 or 20 and going to these warehouses and back on because they're basically cross-stocking and carrying materials and storing materials in that kind of limited sphere.
So, will that road, that is that side road, are you going to, is that something that you're, that you have discussed with DOT to close off to the public and it's only accessible to those? Because again, like I said, that side road is used by the public off of Hoffmeyer Road and off of the interstate for regular people to use. But if it's that, if you're going to have that distribution center, you still have. And I'm saying that because in Charlotte, they have the Amazon distribution near my brother's house. And you could barely get through that when especially Christmas time, it was ridiculous. The trucks were parked all down the interstate and on the road that you could not get through to get to your own home because the trucks were parked all the way down the interstate and down the residential area and people could not get to their home. So, how will that affect the businesses that are at the mall?
That is something that DOT will not review until an application is made by the property owner.
Has that application been made?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Those are some questions that just need to be addressed by this board before something is decided. Because you have to think about, not only, I mean, it's great to have the distribution center because it brings jobs, but you also have to think about the other businesses that you have. How is it going to affect them as well?
We are usually the beginning of a project and we're advisory. We do not, if we vote unanimous on something, it goes to the city council and they're the ones that actually make a decision. So, your questions probably apply. Our determination is the zoning correct for that area irrespective of what the use is. City council will make a decision whether to approve that zoning change. And if I recall correctly, it's already in the city. So, at that point is when the developer-owner will begin his project studies, trying to see how he's going to fit it on there, what his highest and best use will be. And then he'll get engineering involved and he probably already has. And then they'll submit applications to the city and to DOT for approval. So, this is, and it's good to voice your opinion and concerns early. But at our level, we're just kind of little guys on a totem pole.
I understand that. I just want you to think when you're making your decision to look at the whole perspective of it.
Absolutely.
Because even though you are the little guy on the totem pole, you are the first guy on the pole.
I agree, and I think you should clearly be at the city council meeting.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this request? Hearing none, I'll ask, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this request? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come forward and give us your name.
Hello, my name is Juliette Thomas and I'm with RAS Development. Thank you for having me today and thank you for listening to our request. I do want to, if I may, address a question. I think you had a great question and I want to be respectful to you. And I will say that, you know, I thought about what you said about the Amazon facility. And the Amazon acreage is so much greater than the acreage that we have proposed here today. I think that we are requesting to rezone 13 acres. So, it would be nowhere near the amount of substantial space that an Amazon distribution center would have on the area. So, that was one of the things that came to mind when you were speaking. So, I hope that addresses some of your concern as it relates to our topic.
I'd like for you to address that.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
All right. Excuse me, I'm trying to be courteous to everybody.
I appreciate that.
So, one of the things I would like to convey is that we do not have intent to sell this property. We have a relationship with the tenants and the medical office space in that building. We have a great relationship with those tenants. We want to make sure that they continue to stay there, which is why we want to make sure that the land has the highest and best use at that location. I know that one of the concerns that we talked about is if we rezone this to heavy industrial, will we put in a manufacturing facility? That is not in our scope of development. That is not what we do. We have zero intent to do that. So, our true intent is to do what we've conveyed and that is a distribution facility space. And again, I want to convey that we want to protect the integrity of the property and also maintain that relationship with those tenants so that they can continue to re-sign the lease with us, so.
Ms. Thomas, you're on the development side or design side?
So, I am a licensed commercial agent in the state of North Carolina and my background is real estate in general and I serve as a communication representative for the organization.
Okay, and this may be an engineering question. I guess the back of this property with the truck activity and traffic, I want to be assured that it's not going to affect or be seen from across the creek with noise and I guess mostly noise or visible pollution. Because these gardens that the Bruce and Lee have are going to be amazing. And as long as, in your opinion, and I know that you're a commercial broker, welcome to the world. I am as well. And it might be an engineering question or something like that. But can you address the distance from the building and the activity versus the?
Well, to be honest with you, not off the top of my head. I don't know the buffer space and, you know, the specifications that the civil engineer has already rendered in the drawing. If that's something that's important to the city of Florence, we want to make sure that we're respectful. And I understand that there's probably a lot of investment in the gardens to maintain the integrity of the space so that, you know, the beauty of Florence can be appreciated and continue to thrive. So, that is something that we will take into heavy consideration and we don't want to do anything to degrade the property value of Florence either. We want to do what's best for the city. And we do believe that for this specific location, that is the highest and best use for the property. So, if there is a buffer that is in place that you would like to, you know, relate to our team, that is something that we want to make sure that we're considerate of because we want to have a long-term relationship with the city of Florence.
Mr. Moore, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes. Unlike our old code, our new code does require.
If you'd stay there, I appreciate it. I might have a question.
Buffer yards between uses as opposed to the previous code only required a buffer yard if the properties were in the city limits. So, it's drastically increased buffer yard requirements with our new code. And with that, there will be certain buffer yards that are imposed on the property between the adjacent uses being probably not as much up against the UPS portion, but certainly up against the multifamily and then the garden area as well. And, yeah, that's right. The floodplain. The floodplain, you start to see a little bit of it here, but it really gets up into the Bruce and Lee Foundation's property. So, there's quite a bit of area there of natural buffer that's.
That would be buffer?
Yeah, that will be in place.
All right. The staff, have any, staff, do any of the commissioners have any questions of Ms. Thomas? You mentioned the tenants. You own the existing building?
Yes.
At least, how many?
Well, the organization does.
And how many tenants are there?
There is one primary tenant that really is the stakeholder in that piece of property and then there's several other tenants around there as well.
ACS?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Is this, is this project due in large part to support them?
No, this is completely separate of any relationship with their organization.
So, this isn't for their purpose. There's somebody, well, who's going to use it?
This is for our intent, so, you know, our organization plans to keep this property.
Speculative. Well, you mentioned support tenant, so.
Well, and just to be clear, we want to make sure that the property is being used in a way where the tenants continue to enjoy their stay and so.
So that it doesn't fringe upon their ability to?
Correct. And so that they can also have a safe environment, continue to work in peace and want to continue to have a business relationship with us.
Any other questions for Ms. Thomas?
To do the distribution center and the warehouse. That is to be determined at this time. Well, it's to be determined. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to not answer your question, but it's to be determined.
And the total, I guess, staff, the total, it was 13 acres?
Yes, I believe so.
That's the total area to be rezoned.
And some of that purpose would be for storage. So, that's what we're kind of looking at, the storage warehouse.
Have your clients looked at light industrial use versus?
So, we have looked at light industrial use because in all honesty, when we talk about this, you know, I think heavy industrial use, I'm thinking a manufacturing facility or something like plastics manufacturing and that is really not the space that we're trying to participate in. However, the light industrial use does not indicate with the current standards that were changed recently that that would be applicable to us. So, the light industrial use is kind of, you know, interesting because it doesn't have a lot of the typical light industrial uses that I've seen in the past. So, it, yeah, yeah.
Could staff tell us the difference between what's accepted in light industrial versus heavy industrial?
The light industrial is generally more, yeah, less manufacturing-based whereas the heavy industrials, the main difference, I think, is more manufacturing-based. We were just looking at the map and the area that's to be rezoned is roughly 10 acres. And then the three would remain in the general commercial.
So, can you do distribution in light commercial, I mean, light industrial?
Not technically according to the ordinance.
Interesting. Because that's really.
You were recommending light industrial.
We were suggesting that, just see if there was a way to make it work. But just looking at the chart right now, it doesn't permit it in the light industrial.
It seems their use really falls into a light industrial use. I mean, it's not manufacturing.
That's correct.
But that's a whole nother discussion.
Yeah, and Elena and I discussed this earlier. So, our code does allow for the property owner, if they're, if they are looking to locate a facility or anything for that matter, whatever their type of use is. If there are, if it is going to operate a certain way, they can submit a plan and what those thresholds are on everything. So, traffic, number of square footage, all of those certain things, how they'll mitigate that. And we can work within our parameters to approve that use and hold them to those standards. So, a lot of times that heavy to light gets determined mainly on kind of the, a general understanding of what traffic generation could be or what, you know, just those various different characteristics that can affect the properties around it. So, I believe that's probably why this warehousing, you know, just from noise, potential noise with the use. Again, with warehousing, what they are proposing, I don't know that the impact would be very significant to the adjacent properties. But again, as a whole, you know, the heavy industrial warehousing or heavy industrial zoning designation could have an effect.
So, if city council approves heavy industrial, five years from now, 10 years from now, this property owner could put plastics manufacturing?
Yes.
They would have to fit it into that location.
So, I will say that we have had civil engineers look at this property. It's a very unique parcel of property. And we've looked at, you know, apartment complexes, different types of buildings. We even talked about different retail space for the area. We even talked about different retail space for the area. And because of that parcel of land and the way that it's laid out, this is really one of the only capable uses that we have to put on this land.
Well, I'll compliment your designers because you have absolutely optimized a very ugly piece of property.
Thank you, I thought the same thing. But I have seen many different versions of this and renderings, and this is really the only opportunity to develop the land.
What if you took the route, and I don't know the process, Mr. Moore, of going for the light industrial, but they make provisions for you to have distribution based on approvals and guidelines like you suggested? Is that something?
I think we probably needed to look into that a little bit more on how we could work with a proposal from the applicant and then recommendation from planning commission, but that's something we've-
I really think your use is appropriate. I'm just scared of what happens five years, 10 years from now.
It's killing an anthill with a sledgehammer, you know? It's the difference between slight, I mean, light and heavy. And I think what we're hearing you say is that's more light, but in order for you to get what you want, we got to designate it heavy.
That's correct.
And that's, he went that way, kind of. And it feels like maybe, and that's kind of where I was going to go too, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, can we do some kind of a hybrid deal here and get them what they need without having to open the floodgates to everything that a heavy brings to the table?
I think staff can work with applicant to develop a set of guidelines essentially on the thresholds that they'll develop to, and work within the, a light industrial zoning designation that meets a compromise.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration. And my only other ask is, you know, before you vote, unless you have any other questions, is that you do consider how the parcel is laid out because it would be very difficult to put anything else inside of this space.
Right. No, I think, you know, our job is to figure out a way to help you and help the community. I mean, that's, that's what we do here. So, in conjunction with staff, we want to try to come together and figure a way that satisfies you and satisfies, you know, the community. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we will be in a position to vote on this tonight as much as have you guys get together and talk about a specific plan and come back to us and say, here's what we figured out. Because I don't want to make a final decision that takes anything away from your arsenal of things you could work together on, and then come back to us and say, here's what we figured out, and then let us approve it.
And we hope that it'll be appealing to your client as well as to the commissioners and city council.
But going from light, there's just such a big difference between the two. And I think we all, just listening to the comments, I feel like that's sort of where all of us are.
All right, yes, sir. Mr. Moses, I'm going to let, if there's any, first I'm going to close out the public hearing, and then I'll ask for your motion. Ms. Thomas, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this request? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion. Mr. Moses. Thank you. I have a motion to defer to, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry it delays your client's plans, but I think it's in y'all's best interest as well as Florence's. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is PC 2024-02. Ms. Elaine?
Good evening. This is a request for annexation and then to zone, recommend zoning of RG3 for 137 acres that are located on Bannockburn Road, identified as tax map number 0015201025. This parcel is located on Bannockburn at Green Acres Road, and as you can see, it is, has coneguity through, is that Southbrook subdivision there? Now, this is a close-up of it, and it is surrounded on three sides by county. And it is zoned with small subdivision, small lot subdivisions to the west, and that is what they are requesting the zoning for, is for a single-family detached subdivision with the smaller lots. And according to the future land use map, this isn't considered in ours, but it is neighborhood conservation next to it. So, these are some site photos of the parcel, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Ms. Elaine, is there any questions for, of staff before we open the public hearing portion of this? Hearing none, I will open, as I said, the public hearing. Anybody that's against this, I invite you to come forward. Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name.
Thank you. My name is Bill Dabinski. First of all, I have to apologize. Fired too many rounds in the Marine Corps without air protection and in competition that I don't hear well.
Well, thank you for your service.
I live at 451 Green Acres Road, and our problem is twofold. First of all, at the other end of Green Acres Road, up near 52, there's a development happening right now, and there's going to be over 100 homes there. On the other end of Green Acres Road, this development will have well over a couple hundred homes, and the traffic will be incredible. But the problem is twofold, because in addition to that, across, directly across from this development is a piece of property which is about 100 and some acres that there's been a request years ago to annex into the city, and it's been turned down. That land can't perk, and therefore, they can't get city sewage over there. If this land goes into the city, then it would be contiguous to that land, and it could be developed too. Then, we would have a development at one end of Green Acres Road with a number of hundred houses. Another development at the other end of Green Acres Road with another hundred, number of hundreds of houses. And then across Green Acres Road would be another development, and it's 100 and some acres with another couple hundred houses, which means we have in addition almost 1,000 houses, all trafficked on Green Acres Road. One of my neighbors has written a letter, which you told me has been received. I don't know if the members here have seen it, but she discusses the same thing. The traffic on Green Acres Road right now is tolerable, but the development on the 52, Highway 52 side, isn't complete, and so, we haven't seen that traffic yet. But with those three developments together, it will be, it will be unlivable.
Mr. Dabinski?
I'm an engineer. I was an engineer before I retired, and I'm not against development, but this is incredible.
Well, Mr. Dabinski-
I have 30 acres on Green Acres. There are almost 30 acres. And every two weeks, I pick up the litter on both sides of the road, in my land. Neighbors down the other end of Green Acres pick up litter continuously. And if you have, I don't know, maybe in excess of 500, maybe even close to 1,000 new homes, the traffic and the litter would be unbelievable.
Thank you, Mr. Dabinski.
And, and, Green Acres is not as wide as from here to there, and that's what we're looking at in the way of traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Dabinski, and thank you for your service.
I have one question.
Okay, would you tell him, ask him to come back?
Mr. Dabinski? Just one question.
We have a question. If you'll come back up to the front?
I'm sorry, I-
Once again, as I told you, I don't hear well. I fired too many rounds.
We understand.
Listen, things will happen to all of us eventually. I had one question. Is your property in the city or the county?
It's county.
You're in the county? Okay, okay. That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, in your name?
Good morning, or good evening. My name is Judy Kirby. I live at 3521 Bannockburn Road. I've been there for 25 years. And one thing that concerns me is the number of kids that's been killed on that road. If anybody travels that road very often, they used to put crosses up and down that road, and there's been so many people killed on that road. And because the school, the children that are leaving from school, and if they've been out partying or whatever, the road is not very wide, and then there's a railroad track right in front of my house. And I think for the kind of effort that they're going to put into this new developments, someone's got to do something about the roads. And I'm sure that you notice sometimes potholes all in the roads, and that's, that's the way that people get killed. And anyway, I just, just thought that with all the things that they've got going on, dozens and dozens, and I don't even know how many houses. This, my, each one of us got one of these. He got one, I got one. There's a lot of people on Green Acres Road that probably didn't get this because mine says, I'm getting it because my house is close to what they're going to do. But we've got a lot of people there that would like to have explanation of all this. You know, I mean, I know that people have to have homes, and homes have to be built, but so much going on so fast, I just feel like that they need to put more thought into it than we've got on this paper.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Kirby? Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Appreciate you coming forward.
Excuse me, one other thing I forgot to mention. Those of you that aren't familiar with that area, when we speak of traffic, right, almost adjacent to Green Acres, Howl Springs Road, and Bannockburn is first of all, South Florence High School, South Florence Middle School, and now the New School, and then Dewey Elementary School right down the road. So, you have four schools in that area, the traffic from those schools, school buses, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Dabinski, and raise your hand the next time you want to come up. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to have one more against, and that's two.
Raise your hand. Hi, I'm Valerie Nalan. I also live on Green Acres Road.
Did you say your last name is Allen?
Nalan.
Nalan, okay.
N-O-W-L-I-N.
Thank you.
And I've been in that area all my life, pretty much 52 years, and I mimic everything that they're saying. I'm not against the development and growth because this is private property, and they can do whatever they want. But considering the actual, the traffic that goes up and down that road is crazy. And then we have racing that's constant, that is never, it's like every time somebody races, nobody gets caught. But you could call and tell them they're racing, but they come after the fact. But that's another situation, and yes, people have been killed on Bannockburn Road, Green Acres Road, just been speeding, missing the stop sign, straight into the, you know, going into the railroad track. It's just crazy out there. And then we have the schools. The train, whenever it comes, it stops. When the train stops, you have the traffic on Green Acres Road, the traffic on Howl Springs Road. People are going around two or three cars to get to Bannockburn Road. Then you have people turning on Howl Spring head-on because people are trying to, you know, cross people over just to get over to the other side to avoid the train. So, it's a lot to consider, please. Like I say, I'm not against development and growth. It's just the timing, the number of houses, the traffic, and all the chaos that comes with that development being right there. Because we have one on the other end of Green Acres, just like Mr. Dabinski said, and then, of course, one new one that's going to be on Howl Springs that's being developed right now. So, if we bring that in, just imagine how much traffic we're going to experience. And we have well-developed people who've been in this area all their lives, elderly people traveling these roads. My mom, who's an amputee, having to go to doctor's visits, traveling these roads where people speeding by. I mean, just imagine all of the chaos that's going to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Nalan. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
And that's going to be the last one. I've got to let the other side talk. Thank you, and I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to speak. All right, I'm sorry. Okay, would anyone like to come forward this, requesting or in favor of this? And I hope that y'all will be able to address their concerns and questions. You can, but only one at a time. Your name, sir?
My name is Paul Michaud. I'm the applicant, and I'm a community planner and a project planner with Cross Engineering Services for this project. And, yeah, I think I understand people, what they mean about traffic because we all kind of experience how difficult that is becoming. And what I can assure people is that in development of this property, we'll be taking into account all their concerns. We'll work with DOT, and we'll have an in-depth traffic analysis. The traffic counts that are closest by, I think one is 8,000 a day, the other is 3,000. So, anything over 2,000 is going to require more, you know, major site distance and spacing for intersections. So, you know, based on our correspondence with DOT, in order to move this development forward, if any type of requirements for infrastructure improvements, you know, we would, we would have to do those to proceed.
What about widening of the road?
Widening of the road?
Yes.
Yeah, if that's something, once we submitted our traffic study that DOT required, without that, then, you know, we would take into consideration the cost of that. And if it still worked out for the development, then we would be widening the road as required.
That's only in your, the frontage of your development. You're not talking about widening the road.
Well, DOT, sometimes the extent of what they require to improve can go beyond the property lines. Typically, though, it is more local to the, to the project. I think looking at it right now at this stage, we would only be looking for one access onto Bannockburn and one access onto Green Acre.
Mr. Dabinski, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to hog this because any commissioner have a question. Mr. Dabinski mentioned that the property across the street does not perk. You're asking to come into the city limits, I assume, to get access to municipal utilities?
Yes, sir. The city has plenty of water. It runs on the short side of Bannockburn and Green Acre. Sewer is a little bit further away, but there is a tie-in point that we've identified with Mr. Martin, or sorry, Mr. Fox, that is at Howl Springs and Bannockburn. So, we will look into potentially doing a grab flow to that pump station.
Any other questions of this gentleman?
Let me ask you this. I'm looking at this. You said one access point off of Green Acres? And one off of Bannockburn?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. We're still in the preliminary portion of that, but ideally, I think that would be the best option for the lot.
And then this, I don't know what this is, on the opposite side. Okay, there you go. So, we see Green Acres, and then you see Bannockburn. And then that other road, where does that up- And then that other road, where does that appear? That whole li- whole line there under, uh, what is that?
Oh, right.
Cricklewood.
Cricklewood. None of those are through streets. They're all, those are all cul-de-sacs with properties on them.
So the only way you can get out of there, in other words, this is what I'm asking you, is to come off of, uh, come out on Green Acres or come out on Bannock Burn. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other questions of this gentleman? Uh, thank you, Mr. Michu.
Have you, before, before you start developing the property, would you consider going to DOT? You did, you had to travel a mile or better, go DOT and find it and get rid of it. But widening the road, do you know that before you start developing the property, would you do that?
Well, uh, before, right, before the land disturbance permit was awarded, we would have to have already our encroachment permits from DOT. So we would already have that agreement before we were allowed to break any, any kind of ground.
All right, Mr. Michu, we'll let the other gentleman speak. Thank you. Thank you. Your name, sir?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Chad Rass. Um, I am with RNO Properties. I am the developer that's proposing this property today, this project today. Uh, Cross Engineering is who we have brought into, um, our house to do the design work, do the preliminary work and get, get us, you know, across the finish line, hopefully, with this project. We have, um, we acquired the property, or we have a contract on the property. The, the Bruce family was the family that owned this property. And we knew from the beginning that the sewer was going to be an issue, that we never intended to try to do any septic or anything like that, that it was, for us, sewer was the go or no-go. And we came up with a plan, um, through Cross Engineering with Paul's assistance, to come up with a way to work gravity to get it, it's basically going to run three thousand feet of gravity down Bannock Dock Road. Did I say that correctly? I'm sorry if I didn't. But down, down, down Bannock Dock, cross under Howe Springs and tie in. We are looking at, um, a hundred thirty-seven acres. We're looking at around three hundred and s- three hundred forty to three hundred fifty homes is what it would fit with leaving the green space as required. Um, it calls for a thirty percent minimum green space. We're probably going to have a little more than that just because we're going to utilize the wetland areas that are inside the property so we don't have to do any mitigation or any damage to any of the wetlands other than what would be allowed for road crossing. Uh, we will be absolutely agreeable to, uh, creating a buffer around the backsides of our property and, and where it comes along the, the, um, it's not up here anymore, but the, um, any of the areas along the city limits, the current city limits, like Pew Tree. We would also have, you know, very good buffers along it and down the side of Green Acres up until where our ingress egress would approach on Green Acres. With DOT, we're going to do whatever DOT requires us to do because we can't move forward without DOT's approval and permission. We're already prepared and, and fully expect at least a right-hand turn lane at a minimum to, to turn into our property and may be required to do some type of median improvement, which would cause us to have to expand the width of the entire roadway, uh, for several hundred feet each direction, whatever their requirement would be, based on the current traffic count and the increased traffic amount that we would impose on the property.
If you don't mind staying there, Mr. Rass, ours out tonight is determine, is the zoning change and annexation into the city appropriate? We're not here to really judge and critique his engineering and what their plans are. And this could be a model over a five-year, ten-year build-out. We don't really need to know those things. What we need to know is if we rezone it or annex it and bring it into the same zoning, these are single-family residential homes uh, as what's next to it, if I'm correct, Ms. Lane?
That's correct. It'd be the same lot size.
So our, our job tonight is determine, uh, is it appropriate to bring it into the city? And, uh, is that the appropriate zoning? I understand y'all's concerns and fears with the traffic and, and that they're going to have to go through a tremendous amount of approvals. They, they don't even own the land yet. They're under contract. So their process is structured. Uh, this is the first step because if they can't get in the city, they can't get municipal services. So then they apply through the city and through DOT, engineering and all this other stuff. So is it right to, uh, appeal to your concerns by not either approving the annexation or the, um, zoning when they may be able to address every one of your concerns and make it a, a very nice, appealing, uh, area? And, you know, if the need is there, um, if the demand is there for housing, then, um, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of carrying on, but our job tonight is decide whether to annex and rezone. Uh, and I don't really want to cross-examine, uh, those against and those for, uh, too much. And it's a decision that this fine experience, uh, group of commissioners will, will decide. Do, for obviously hogging the, the mic, are there any commissioners that would like to, uh, talk to Mr. Rass? Or ask questions for Mr. Rass? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, um, I will close the public hearing portion of this unless there's anyone else that would like to. I think that was, um, time-consuming, um, and effective. I call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I tend, my, my thoughts tend to line up with yours. We're not qualified to judge the merits of, of all that's going to have to go forward with them and, and getting the approvals to do what they want to do. What's appropriate for us to do is, is, is it, is it in the interest of the community for the city to annex the land and rezone it? And, uh, it's adjacent to current R-three zoning. And I don't see, uh, any reason not to grant the, uh, the annexation and the zoning change. And then they will go before DOT and have to jump through a lot of hoops, but that's not really for us to decide.
Can you put that in the form of a motion?
So, so I, well, very simply, I move we approve.
I have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Of a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs, nays, and the ayes have it unanimously. All right, um, PC twenty twenty-four dash oh three, Ms. Lane, you're working overtime tonight. Staff report, please.
This one's quick and easy. It's a donut hole in Windsor Forest. To zone it NC fifteen, um, lot located at twenty-five oh six Parsons Gate. Tax map number zero, twelve twenty-one, oh one, two eight five. This is, as you can see by the blue being the city limits, it's one of those donut holes in Windsor Forest. It's an undeveloped parcel. Um, the property owner didn't even realize he was not in the city limits until he came to get a building permit to build his house. And we directed him to the county and, uh, he came back the next day and said, here's my annexation petition. So everything around it is zoned NC fifteen, and that's what it would be zoned. It's the appropriate size and use, um, proposed. The future land use has it as neighborhood conservation. So, um, here is the vacant lot, and they're ready to get started. So that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Um, we do have a public hearing. Excuse me, is there? We, we've got to have a public hearing. All right, uh, having no questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak against, uh, this request? Hearing none, is anyone like to speak in favor of? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Moses?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might like to recuse myself from this vote. Um, conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you very much. You can have a seat down there. We still have forum, so I have a, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Uh, the second.
Mr. Key.
Yes. So, uh, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs, nay, the ayes have it. That was a short trip. Mr. Rabbit? Okay, um, PC twenty twenty-four dash oh four, staff report, please.
This is another rezoning of parcels that are already in the city. It's a request to rezone from NC six point two to NC six point three. Two parcels located at seven oh nine and seven eleven West Darlington Street. Tax map numbers nine hundred sixty dash eleven dash double oh two and zero one seven. They are on the north side of Darlington Street between Harrell and Lawson Streets. They are vacant right now, and as you can see, they're, um, rather small parcels. And they are zoned NC six point two, which permits duplexes and single-family, uh, buildings only. And the, um, future land use map has them as neighborhood conservation. So the, uh, requested zoning designation of NC six point three still falls within that, uh, recommendation. The main difference between the six point two and six point three, as you can see from the chart from the Unified Development Ordinance, is that a multiplex is permitted in the NC six point three. But it's not permitted in the six point two. Basically, what it boils down to is the owner would like to maximize, of course, the number of units that he can put on these two parcels. But as you can see in the lower table, the requirements for either duplex or a mi- multiplex are a minimum nine thousand square foot lot with ninety-foot frontage. Each of these two parcels on its own is fifty feet wide, and I believe they're about a hundred feet deep. So, um, the plan is to combine them and then build a multiplex. And a multiplex, a four-unit multiplex, um, is a structure that needs, is required to look like a large, single-family home. And, um, he just showed me tonight the plans that he has for it and looks at first blush to, uh, meet the requirements of the ordinance for a multiplex. But, um, this is a picture of the site, and as you see, it's vacant, two small vacant lots. And he already has plans to combine them if this is approved. So that concludes staff's report.
I noticed that the lot dimensions are the same for six point two and six point three. It's just the setbacks. They're all different.
Setbacks are a little bit different, and that would be-
The lot's width and depth are the same.
That's correct, yes, for the duplex and the multiplex uses.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Ms. Lane. I will open the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone against this request? Would like to come forward and speak? Hearing, see, ma'am, you look like you're on the edge. Okay, you'll have to come forward then. Thank you. Your name, please.
Jean Zolikoffer.
Ms. Zolikoffer, I love your name and I appreciate you coming forward.
Nice seeing you again. I own the adjacent property to these two lots. And I was, um, really wondering about the difference in the two conservation things. And what did you say? You, it's now, um-
NC six point two, which is just allows duplexes and single-family homes. And then the six point three allows those plus multiplexes, which is a three or four unit structure.
Okay, and then the requirement for that new rezoning will be what? The, eh, the, um-
What do you mean by the requirement?
Distance across and going back.
It would also require a ninety-foot minimum width and nine thousand square foot parcel. So once those were combined, they would be ten thousand square feet and have a hundred square foot frontage or a hundred feet of road frontage, which is the requirement for either a dupl- he could either put one duplex on that when they're combined or as, as it's zoned right now, once he combined them, he could put one duplex for two units. Or if it's rezoned, then he could put a four-unit quadruplex on there.
Okay, if we go with the latter one, that's the four units?
Yes, ma'am.
The four units. Is that going across with enough buffer room, parking space and everything?
We would have to look at the site plan and make sure that it did, um, accommodate, because it would be required to have two parking spaces per unit, so eight parking spaces.
Two pa- parking spaces, that's, so that's eight parking spaces available for the duplex, right?
For the quadruplex.
Qua- quadruplex, okay. Does that lot, does it go all the way back from Darlington Street? I'm, I'm not, I try to visualize acreage.
Right there above it.
Right there.
That's not my thing. But there's a lot behind that, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there? Partial, a partial lot behind it?
He could only develop these two parcels, um, combined. That area that's outlined in red on there would be the only, he would have to be able to put the four-unit building plus eight parking spots and some buffering on that lot. So we would need to work with him. He would need to work with an architect, um, or engineer to make it all fit.
Is it possible for it to go up rather than across?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the lot in the back could be used for parking? Because it looks like it's right on-
It would have to all be on the lots outlined in red. He could not expand it onto anybody else's parcel.
Okay, and that seems to be reasonable?
I haven't done the actual math for it, but if, since the ordinance says that multiplexes can be on that size of a parcel, it must be doable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Let me get this right. Zolikoffer.
Good job. Good job. Got a thumbs up.
Well, I'd surprise myself. Uh, is there anyone else that has a question or would like to speak against this? Hearing none, uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Your name?
Lorenzo Edwards. I'm the-
Say it again.
Lorenzo Edwards. I'm the developer of this property.
Okay.
Um, my family's been here in that area for a hundred years.
Wow.
This year marks the hundred year when my grandfather actually built across the street from there. My main concern, the reason why I wanted to build something there, because I purchased a lot from a family who, their family had been here for a long time. Her mother passed away, the two sisters inherit this property. Um, I'm from the area, wanted to improve the area. Thought the best use would be is to bring something that looks indicative to Florence. Um, working with the architect and everything, we do have the space for parking buffers completely around. It will look like how the neighborhood used to look when it was fresh, new. Um, I think it would-
I'd love to see a picture of that. I'm talking about-
Oh, when it was finished on, okay. Um, yeah, um, it's something just like to bring back the lifetime neighborhood. The area has declined over the years. There's nothing really there. And Darlington Street is like the gateway to our neighborhood. So my mother, who was born and raised on that area, these are all my relatives too. That's my aunt and my cousin. So I mean, like, we've been there. We actually, where I'm building is where my grandfather, who used to park his mail trucks. He was the first black man to have a mail route in this area. So it's just something because it feels good and I have the opportunity, I purchased the land, and I want to improve it. I want it to look good again. Um, all the way down to the landscape, I don't even know what I want to put on the landscaping. So that'll bring back a little bit more life. And I see like if you don't have a connection to it, let's make Florence look like how it looked when we were proud of Florence, you know, and show something. And I hope it bring, bring back the energy, you know, backtrolley.
Well, Mr. Edwards, um, it is Edwards, right?
Yeah.
You, um, invigorate me. I mean, I am so impressed with your energy and, and desire to, you know, bring it back. And, um, and my hat's off to you. And, you know, I appreciate you putting your, uh, financial wherewithal and, and your time in that. Um, I have one question for you. Part of our job here is to protect, um, the neighbors adjacent. And they are six point two, single-family homes. Six-three is a step up, and, and that where, that is where it gets, um, a, a little difficult for us. But what you plan and what you intend to do there is absolutely over the top. So my question to you is- So, my question to you is, does the development work as a duplex, using the same outstanding designs and futuristic, or in an effort to recreate the past, does it not economically work as a duplex versus a fourplex?
No, not for my standpoint, and that's the reason why I'm not doing, like, two-bedroom quads. It's all one-bedroom units. And it, really from a passion project, I mean, my godmother's Maggie Gilof, she called me and told me about a neighbor of ours who went blind. He can no longer live alone. He needed a smaller, modern place. No one else can afford to give him a smaller, modern place and keep him in the neighborhood. He's now in Lake City, where he could be around the corner. You know, he's a child of our neighborhood. And when I got that story to think that this man who grew up in these same streets that I did, this could be me, you know, and he's now displaced, because there's no housing. He can't get into a nursing home, which is in the neighborhood, you know, but he's not at that state. He's independent, but he just need more efficient housing, you know, something where he can maneuver and learn that nicer space, but then be in the neighborhood that he's familiar with, around people who he's familiar with. He's in Lake City now, he's never lived there, you know? But this would give opportunity for people who want to stay in the neighborhood. Like, my mom had to move, because she has to live with my sister. She grew up in that neighborhood. Other members of this council lives in this neighborhood, familiar with this neighborhood. You know, we were very neighborhood central, it's like a family, you know? Bring that back, that, oh, that's my essence, was to bring this back, and to not inundate the neighborhood by bringing, you know, four, two-unit, you know, that then, keeping it nice and tight, kind of, just assists, you know, not to, like, really inundate people with tons of traffic, or tons of people coming and going. Think about making it one-bedroom units would allow it to not have, like, you know, tons of people coming and going, that would limit the amount of come and go, and wear and tear, and all that kind of stuff on the area. Plus, it's adjacent to a major street. I mean, Darlington Street has sidewalks, two lanes, and media, so, and two, there are tons of apartment complexes just yards away. It's just that integrity.
Well, Mr. Edwards, your, your energy and your focus is contagious, and I applaud you for that. Are there any other commissioners that would like to ask Mr.?
I heard, I always listen, I remember always listening to them always listen to. Now, you said you were making a single-bedroom units. How many are going to be?
Four one-bedrooms.
You're not going to turn this into, uh...
No short-term rentals.
Or either a nursing unit?
No. I will keep a unit for myself, because I rent while I'm here, so I can be close to my mom, so I keep an open apartment. I want to be on our property, though, in our neighborhood.
Then we all single on the ground floor?
No, sir. This, this is a schematic.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I just...
I can see it from here. Charlie, can you see?
Okay. I just heard you say, I've heard that one thing, one single bedroom, because I know there's some single bedrooms that the housing authority have out there, like, why you see it? Single, single bedroom units out there have there, and there's, uh, those will be affordable living places for people that are going to be renting from?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a private developer, I'm not connected to that, but yeah, it will be.
These are market rate rents, not government.
No, yes, private, I'm just an individual.
I mean, because they are going to be single low rent.
For our neighborhood, yeah, yeah. I only have three bedrooms, so it's not like that kind of complex. Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're not going to be huge or anything like that, so it's not like I'm going to be able to offer, you know, multiple people with multiple things. This is more something for a few people who can afford to rent.
They like the tiny houses they got.
No, 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 I don't know. You have too much space for tiny houses. I live in cities where there's a need for tiny houses. There's not a need here, you know, there's guy with 100 acres up before me.
Any other questions for Mr. Edwards? Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you.
I believe this young lady right here, you're going to have to come forward. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Rosalyn Green. I'm Lorenzo Edwards and our cousin, and I think what we were talking about is because the property that is surrounded is own, family-owned, and what Lorenzo and I was talking about is the units, because of trying to find affordable property, affordable places for people to rent, that people can not, that is subsidized by the federal government. People are looking for places, like, my daughter lives in Spartanburg, one-bedroom apartments are the thing now, because you have single individuals who look for one-bedroom apartments, but they're looking for reasonable. Most people who like teachers' assistance cannot afford $1,200, $1,400, $1,500, $2,000 apartment rent, but they want to live somewhere safe, they want to live somewhere where the rent is reasonable. If I'm making $800 every two weeks, $1,600 a month, I can't pay $1,600 in rent, but if I can afford someplace that is reasonable, and it is safe, and it's a one-bedroom, and it's like loft-style living, or that, that is what we're talking about. I think the idea of this is just to try it, to see if this works, if it is something that is, that is needed here, which we know is needed here in Florence, and if it works, then we may consider trying to develop more. Am I speaking this correctly? And that's what we are talking about.
All right. Thank you. All right. I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion. I have a motion and a second, and I would like to make a comment, and invite the other commissioners to do the same. If it wasn't for your love for the community and your desire to make that area better, the fact that it's 6.2 everywhere except for across the street, which is industrial, and that's usually a step to something like multifamily and then single-family, I would have voted against this out of protection to the homes that are next to it, but the fact that you're all family, and you're here, gives me the confidence that, who am I to say that, and I would have been a voter one, because I'm sure everybody up here is probably going to vote in favor of this, but I just want to let you know that it wasn't for the fact that you brought your family, and the cohesiveness of your family, and the fact that they are on board with this, my vote, you'll see in a minute. Any other comments?
I, I was wanting to worry you also, because he, I would, I'm, I'm hard on single-family homes, single-family, low-income builders, that's because, see, I've tired people coming here and building apartment houses, building houses and all, and then we wind up charging $1,600 for place to stay, which a lot of us can afford it because of the income and the salaries goes over in Florence. So, I commend you, and then I hope that you, like I say, this is just a start, and I hope that you can do more, more, more in that area to bring it up to par, because it, that community, all communities, although our community, I say black community, we need this, and we need more, uh, single-family homes for our people.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, Mr. Chairman. I have a call for the vote, and all those in favor say aye. All those against, nay, the ayes have it unanimously, and I want you to give your mother a hug for us tonight. Congratulations, thank you. All right. Looks like we've got a little bookkeeping, a little business work here. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
So, city staff is currently working with a committee made up of Dr. LaHone, Ms. Sams, and who's the third one? My mind's gone blank.
I think Mr. Keith. Mr. Keith, are you on the committee?
No, ma'am, no, sir.
A third, third commissioner, third commissioner. So, we are, we have looked at various other organizations, municipalities with similar repairian type areas in their municipality, and we have put together essentially a comparison showing what our existing Unified Development Ordinance requires, and what we will, would recommend based upon some of the other areas. So, we will send that out to the committee this coming week, and based on conversation with them, it may appear before the planning commission members at next month's meeting for recommendation.
Now, will we get a heads up on that?
Yes, you'll get a heads up on that.
All right. Is that in our...
Well, one other thing, we, Mr. Dudley, is we have hired Josh Whittington to be our new utilities director.
Mr. Whittington, the older Mr. Whittington that's just retired?
Forrest Whittington was our city engineer for 28 years. Josh worked for us for about six years, and in the utility department, went out to GE and worked for them for a number of years, and has come back to us, so we think he'll be a great addition, and will also allow for Jerry to move back over to planning and act, yes, and help spread that workload.
We love him, and we love you too. So, will you stay in this capacity as well?
Yes, I'll stay, I'll remain as assistant city manager, and working with Jerry and doing everything that I'm still doing.
The dynamic duo. Yeah, that's, well, thank you for sharing that.
Terrific trio.
Yeah. Mr. Moses, I call for a motion.
Make a motion, you're due.
I don't have to ask for a vote on that.
I've had a short overtime, I ain't worried.